What's that? Okay, everybody.
AJ is online too now, so we're good.
Okay. I'd like to call the meeting of the Newington Parks and Recreation Board Tuesday, November 18th at six o'clock. Your order. Go call. Okay. Now.
Carol, Iannas.
Here.
Billy de Blasio.
Here.
Beth Delvino.
Here.
Trish Feeny.
Here.
Edna Frankelino.
Here.
Garrett Havens.
Here.
Ethan Pot Wagner.
Here.
Phil Molton.
Here.
Ed Marshon. Diana Sarah.
Here.
Don Woods.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a question.
Thank you. Next to minutes. Anybody or everybody have a chance to take a look? Any questions? If not, can we have a motion to approve?
Some of. Second.
Second. Anybody want to discuss it? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Anybody from the public?
No.
It's gonna be a long meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Um, seventy-eight RPMs.
Yeah.
Go fast. See where are we? Correspondents?
We didn't have any.
Nothing, right?
Wow, wow.
Yay.
Okay. Next to our raising. Monthly report and the tree warden. Anybody on that?
Well, I had a question. Somebody at school asked me if I knew when lifeguard training was gonna be. Any idea?
I do know the answer.
It was either late December.
Yeah, it was on the Christmas break, I think. Or potentially early January, I think she said, first two Saturdays. Yeah. So it's either late December, early January.
Okay.
Yeah, so just tell them to call the office.
Yeah.
Or look online and register, actually.
Once the lifeguard is certified, do they have to get resursified every year?
Yes. Each one has a different one, three years, two years.
Depending on what their skill level is, or?
No, it just runs out. Man, Red Cross has rules on each of these classes. Like CPR, first day.
Okay.
Lifeguard train, lifeguard training.
Okay. Okay, old business, looks pretty lean. New business, winter program guide.
You have a top, you have a.
Every, every day.
Very nice, yeah. That's a mostly good deal. Everyone contributes to it, but he doesn't.
Yeah. She does a great job.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. That'll be in the rear reminder, I think, next week. So that you wanna read the marks and stuff? What you have?
Sorry. Move to accept the winter program guide, including the fees and charges associated with each event, program, and facility.
You have this up, Ken?
Okay.
Any discussion? Just have one thing. Um, is this, the winter program is popular and the summer program is? Or not necessarily?
Depends how you compare them, right? I mean, we have more individual specialty programs in the winter because they're inside. And in the summer, you have the summer camps and pools, swim lessons, that have a lot of registrations. You mean by registration?
Yeah, by just attendance, I guess.
I don't know the true answer to that. Like, well, if you throw in basketball, you know, that's a big one, so I don't know, it's, it's hard. And as far as rentals go, we have just as many rentals in the gym in the winter as we do at the pavilion to Churchill, so. It's everything.
About why I was wondering, because summer, there's a lot of possibilities that you can do outside, you know.
Yes.
But it's winter, more people are home, thinking that maybe take advantage of these programs.
Yeah. We're finding out that our seniors are mature adults that are taking dance classes. At the senior center, we have like country dancing, line dancing is booming. And we have butt, um, jazz and what? Ballroom dancing, jazz, that all kinds of dancing classes are going really well received. So, and sometimes it's cyclical too, right? Uh, tennis is one of those sports, and some years it's great, and some years it slows down. So. I don't know if I have an answer for you on that.
I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate that we're able to take a look at it before it goes out publicly and before everything starts. I know sometimes it's just a matter of timing.
Yeah.
But I had asked about that last time, so I do appreciate it.
Yeah, no, we, I mean, we try, it's just a matter of time.
Sometimes it's.
If the newspaper guy says we're busy and I, I needed two weeks ahead of time, if you're, okay, I gotta, I gotta give it to him.
Thank you.
Yep. So, next is the board meeting scheduled for twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, it's pretty standard, you know, we have to get that to the town clerk's office and they, they put it on the website, I think, or something. Certify it or.
Okay.
No, we did.
Carol, you wanna read the motion? Uh, who the meeting's scheduled for?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, um. I make a motion to approve the Parks and Recreation meeting dates from January first, twenty twenty-six through January thirty-fifth, twenty twenty-seven. Second.
Second.
I have a question. We're meeting at St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah. We might have trouble with a forum. Ah. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. What do they call it? The Irish goodbye. See you later.
They don't even say goodbye. It's the Irish fade.
Irish fade, okay. Is that a real question?
Yeah. No.
You wanna address it when we get votes to it? One. We can have, I mean, here. Here, board meeting.
Yeah, not alcohol.
Yeah.
We get both parks and.
Um. Let's see, January.
I'm only kidding.
Okay, well, I mean, we could address that as a board if, you know, the month before, we could see how it goes.
All those green ice cream things that we.
At least it's not on a Friday. Vote president to give us the dis.
Exactly, sure, there you go. True.
And then who seconded that?
I did. Sorry.
Okay, so we're good. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Carol. Thanks for bringing that up.
Question too, that was a.
Humdinger.
Uh, let's see. The chapel sponsorship, sponsorship agreement for Night of Lights.
Yeah, this is Pastor Jim. Great, great guy.
Pastor.
Uh, he's the, um.
Community.
He's, he owns a community cafe with, uh, his wife.
Yeah.
And, um, we were kind of established this relationship now, we're very friendly, and he was the one that got, turned the, just two gals over to us too, so it was nice. And he wanted to get involved at the last minute, and so he's gonna get his youth group. He's the church, they call it the pumpkin church on New York Avenue Church Street. And, um, they're gonna have the youth group have a tent and a table, and they're gonna have a Christmas hat decorating contest and give away cookies. And give away some prizes to first, second, and third place, but he's trying to recruit young people to come to his church, so. I'm gonna say, this is a cheap joke, but hats off to Pastor.
Make sure you put that in the minute. Yeah, thank you. This is easing her out.
Gareth, do you wanna read the motion?
Motion to accept five hundred dollar public and private partnership agreement with chapel. As presented for the Nights of Light, event, lights event on Friday, December fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Need a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Uh, next, though, is the installation of the gate at Churchill Park.
Okay, so, um, we've been having a variety of vandalism and bad things happening, um, up in the three pavilions at night mostly. It, it, it could be weekday, it could be weekends, there's no rhyme or reason to it. But we thought. One way to address it is to maybe, when you go into the driving of the Churchill Park, uh, parking lot, the pond, the street ahead, on the right-hand side is that road, the pathway. Right there, we're thinking of putting a gate, um, to control when we wanna control it. So this time of year, when we don't do pavilion rentals, there's no reason people should be back there.
Yep, right, true.
So, you know, um, we're doing, there's, they're doing some bad things with animals and, uh, stuff like that. It's, it's really not a good thing right now. And they're doing a bunch of dropping off of garbage, um, like sofas and washers and dryers. And, you know, ever since we started charging at the landfill, everybody's dumping at the parks, which I predicted, because it happened to me in New, New Britain, the same thing. And then we took that, that fee off. But, um, it is what it is, and so if it's okay with you guys, I'd like to install a fence, it's not that much money, it was like fifteen hundred bucks, uh, from the, um, uh, contractual services account, which we have money in. Yeah. I give out that. Um, and, and then we, I'm not guaranteeing we're gonna lock it every day, but we're gonna lock it when we want to, and we'll have control over it. In the summertime, I can't see locking it because there's too many people that belong here. But otherwise, I think we should, and I think we should control it, so that's my suggestion to you guys.
Okay.
Okay.
What happens in the event of an emergency, how would an ambulance get up there?
They'll all know the, the code.
It's gonna be an electronic thing, not a key. Yeah.
It'll be a combination lock.
Yeah.
They already have a combination.
Okay.
Yeah. It's the same one.
Yeah.
Bill, can you read?
Sure. I move to approve the installation of gate at northeast corner of Churchill Pond Roadway.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, so, last but not least, relocation of cans shed.
Yeah, so if that approved, then, then the idea then is to move our can shed, which is located in the back parking lot on Stones at Churchill, over to the Parks Garage, uh, parking lot. And I think there'll be more eyes on that thing, it'll be more secure, um, and will stop some of the vandalism that's going on in that. I can tell you that these, these nonprofit organizations are raising a thousand dollars a month.
Wow.
And two hundred fifty dollars goes back to the Parks and Rec Department's fireworks show. So they keep, you know, the seven fifty, and, and then we keep two fifty, so it's kind of a, a nice, nice deal. And, and I think it'll work out better at the Parks Garage anyway, that was my original thought. Um, but we got overwhelmed by the park guys, but now we're back in, they're, they're back on board with the idea, so.
In the beginning, weren't, weren't people stealing the cans?
Yeah, yeah, it's crazy.
That, that stopped.
No.
They will for a little when they don't know where the shed is.
Yeah. I, I can tell you, kudos to the, the police department, they caught about two guys now, and they, they told them to stop, and they know where they live and everything else. They, they actually have their truck license plates and everything, so. Yeah, we had a, um, undercover camera there, it worked out rather well. So, it's temporary, though.
Uh, Chris.
Um, I make a motion to approve the moving, approve moving the can shed from the back parking lot of Churchill Park to the parking lot of the Parks Garage.
Second.
Anybody have anything? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, Bill, your turn. Candlewood Park, accessible playground.
Okay, um, with our, everybody cross their fingers, we're having some good luck. Uh, tomorrow, uh, we've convinced the contractor to ask the company in Surface America out of New York to come down and bring the rubber surface materials. And they're gonna play each day by, by ear all the way up to Sunday. Uh, if we get forty-five degree weather during the day, they're gonna give it a shot and try to make the, pour the rubber, um, which would be a really big coup for us and get that thing done. For those of you who don't know, the asphalt plants are closing on December twelfth, is what I'm told today, so, um, if that's the case, if we can get the rubber poured, the playground is completely done. So if we can get the rubber surface poured, the playground service, then the contractor, the other contractor will come back and pave the four hundred feet path of asphalt. He didn't want the edges to crush in with the big trucks from the. So, we're, we're up in the air, but I, 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 I'm more, uh, optimistic today than I was two weeks ago, so. And the weather's just so happens to be breaking, so thank God for good weather coming up this week. Yeah. We'll see what happens.
Yeah, even the rain is, is a bit, just a little bit Friday night.
Yeah. You're supposed to warm up into next week.
Yeah, so if these guys hang out, they'll do Saturday and Sunday if they have to.
Yeah.
So, uh, they did Saturdays and Sundays at Seymour Park last year, so I think we're in a better shape than we were two weeks.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. Youth basketball registration.
Yeah, three hundred twenty-five total kids, girls and boys, K through eighth grade.
That's great.
Plus, we have travel basketball in here, and plus, we have high school basketball, so there's a lot of basketball going on in the wintertime. Um, Sam does a great job scheduling every single minute of this gym floor. And I don't know if any of you guys remember, oh, nobody's gonna use that gym. Yeah. Yeah, it was two, two gyms, too big, too much, you know, blah, 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 anyways.
We're plus Emmanuel Christians in there, that is, high schools in there.
Yeah. It's, it's amazing, really, the leagues in there. We had, uh, I did the, our computer company from Columbia was checking phones, just in Mark, this community center was over two hundred visits, two hundred thousand visits, excuse me. So it's a lot of people that come through here. Yeah. Pretty cool.
Uh, next, holiday decorations.
Yep, the park guys, uh, we had staff meeting this morning, they just told us that they're pretty much finishing up, they're wrapping up all the decorations. Uh, for those of you did see, we have, uh, our first seven-foot-tall star that comes on top of the Christmas tree.
Yeah.
Seven foot?
Seven, yeah, it's amazing. Somebody help me, um, support, support.
Soworski.
Soworski?
No, 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 Soworski.
Soworski is a crystal company.
Yeah.
So I did a, I did a little research. Yeah. Yeah. So I did a little research in New York City on top of their tree.
I was gonna say, I heard like a mini New York City.
Yeah, their, their star is worth one point five million to two million.
Yeah.
And we paid four hundred ninety-five bucks. It's very much like them.
It's quite a few hours you make some.
But for those of you who don't know, I found this to be interesting, the way we installed the star was we put this big giant pipe and, and lashed it to the tree trunk of the, inside. And then they put, that made it sturdy, and then the star went into the pole. So, pretty cool, yeah, the guys did a great job. Uh, big kudos to Clay for buying it, and, um, uh, Ben and Rick were the two predominantly guys that did the star, but. And then the other guys, I, I, I also give them praise because they do the other guys' works while they're doing decorations, so.
Yeah.
It's kind of a team effort, and it works out pretty nicely. But it's, it's really good, we have more stars, more decorations than ever. Now the guys are yelling at these Tilka Tavasso guys, because they, the last bit we have to do are the decorations that hang on the poles on Garfield Street.
Oh, yeah.
And, and we also have that thing over the road that's going in.
Yeah.
But hopefully by the end of the week, we should have that pretty well wrapped up.
Okay.
Right? So.
A little Christmas tree trivia.
Okay.
I planted that tree. Me and another guy at work, I was still working in the field with Nels Nelson.
Really?
Oh, wow.
That's how long ago that was. It was a little four to five foot spruce tree.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah. Well, don't cut it down.
No. Not while you're chairman. See you in February.
Night of Lights, Friday, December fifth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-five at six to eight thirty PM.
Yeah. So just hoping you guys can all make it, it's gonna be fun, singing and, and joyful times, celebrations. We're gonna be celebrating Don Woods', um, first thirty-eight years of donating his time to Parks and Rec Board. And, um, we've got the two gals trailer. We just got word today from the state police fire, uh, firebombing squad that will, they gave us the paperwork to do the fire juggling stuff, they're fully on board with it. And, uh.
Don't go near the tree, right?
Yeah. Pretty interesting, so we're, we've got permission to go into the M and T Bank parking lot, the Dunkin', the old Dunkin' Donuts. So they need a six-foot backdrop, this, these juggling performers, then they need a ten-foot stage, and then they need fifteen feet of a big, uh, barricades to keep people away from them, so they don't light up. And, uh. So it, it's gonna be fun, and that'll be like five after seven to seven thirty, and then we plan at seven thirty to start the laser light show, so that's gonna be a ton of fun. Um, and we have, I, I mean, I can't tell you, I, we've like fifteen sponsors, it's just incredible. Um, if the weather's good, like, we could really have a, a big, big time. Uh, we're gonna have a Don Woods' holiday special drink made out of vodka, and they did a cranberry layer and a blueberry layer, foam on the top, and all, all kinds of crap, I don't know. But a whole bunch of stuff, and it's gonna be nice, and then there's gonna be regular cider, regular coffee, and then spiked soda, and, and then all the drinks that will go on, I think it's five dollars and ten dollar drinks, so. Um, all in all, that, and their money that they make are going towards the fireworks show for Shug and Ganza, so that's nice. Um, Ruth Chris is donating a ton, I mean, I, I can't say enough about, uh.
Julian.
Julian, yeah. Um, he is just unbelievably into this thing, and he's come up with, I think, over nine thousand dollars this last month for sponsorships, so. Very thankful of Julian, and also Bollarama of the Callahan family. Um, just, you know, the, the, the laser light show alone is seven thousand bucks, they're splitting it, Bollarama and Ruth Chris, and so. We could never bring that to here, so, um, just fabulous stuff. And then the church is all on board, and the new thing is, we're gonna do a gingerbread, uh, house, uh, demonstration in their churches, one of their rooms, and our after-school program is making, uh, twenty of them for them. So it's really, everybody's kind of coming together in all different ways. The funny thing is Pastor Jim told me that Dee, his wife, they were shoulder to shoulder last year in a community cafe during our event. They said they went through twelve gallons of milk for the hot chocolate and coffee, so.
Wow.
Yeah, they, I think that indicates a, a big number of people. Um, our Columbia people told us we had twelve thousand people last year, I'm hoping to get to fifteen thousand or twenty thousand, which would be incredible.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but we have the potential to do it. Also, Channel Three's gonna be on board with us, and Renee Danino will be there. Um, so we're, we, we signed, uh, Sam, we signed the agreement today, right? So Channel Three's gonna be giving us something like, uh, thirty-five hundred plus another thirty-five hundred for Renee Danino to read it, so. Maybe seven to ten thousand dollars worth of promo ads on top of our three thousand dollars.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, it's really nice, um, and she's doing three events on Channel Three, so she's gonna do Weathersfield, Newington, South Windsor, so it's fun. It worked out just perfectly. And then we got the haywa, hay rides and the train rides, and all those are sponsored by Cedar Ridge Construction, Mark Swetowich Jr. Um, Max Turgeon's doing the, the, uh, Ice Sculpture Chef with the chainsaw. Springbrot Ice, I just, everybody's just, Tony Peralavino came up again with a ton of money. Um, just beautiful, yeah, so all in all, everything is, I hope, pray that the weather's good, because if it is, we're gonna really have some fun. Um, we might have bought a thousand bells for everyone, the first thousand people, and we might ring the bells for Don Woods.
Hope he shows up.
Did you go into a room?
Earlier than I thought.
It's gonna be a fun time.
I think historically, the weather's been okay.
Oh, it's freezing last year.
Yes. Oh, freezing is, that's okay, that's acceptable.
Yeah.
It's snow and rain that will kill us.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Uh, Building a Strong Community Awards, Tuesday, December ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Yep, so anyone that wants to come, hopefully, Don, you can come, um, and we'll take pictures with the four winners, uh, at least three winners, I think. Brian Bundy might have had some cancer surgery just recently, so he's not gonna make it. But, um, it's always a good time, we'll have some kind of cookies and hot chocolate, everyone's invited. Um, and then we will, uh, go down to the town council meeting, and the town council will read a proclamation and say nice things to them.
Okay. What time's that at?
Uh, quarter of six, I think. Quarter of six, I was, uh. Yeah, about quarter of six in here, and seven o'clock. We have the council meeting.
Are, are you gonna, uh, wear that suit that you wore?
Yeah, I thought it was adorable.
That was a nice touch. Yeah, if you take yourself seriously, Phil, you're never gonna win in life. Yeah, the staff had a great time picking out stuff on the internet, trying to make me look good.
Yeah. Noticeable.
Yeah. And you matched so well.
I thought it was, I thought it was AI that, that did that initially, but. Can't, you were able to. I think we, I think we blew Flash Lady's, uh, mind over there. That's all good.
Let's see, so next is Seymour Park and Star Park Basketball Courts update.
Yep, so you know that, uh, we put money aside for that in the CIP, however, um, I said it was questionable, so we could do it. I talked to Mark Swetowich Jr., he thinks he can squeeze in the first week of December to do Seymour Park. He'll do that basketball court, and, um, and we have the tennis people at Mill Pond, I forget, Stitch, Stitch Tennis, will paint it. And then we'll wait till the spring to do Star Park, because we're just running out of time, and we're not timed as much as the weather. Uh, so that's that. You'll see Seymour Park probably being on.
Next is Mill Pond Park lighting update.
Yep, started.
Basketball courts, tennis courts, and parking lot.
Yep, everything started yesterday, I think they got four lights up today, and, um, that's gonna be a nice addition. I'm trying to negotiate a young man from Glass. Glassman, keeper, I'm not positive, but he's gonna help out Bob Dean, Bob Dean's, uh, looking to slow, not slow down, but, you know, yeah, maybe part-time-ish, slow down easy. Um, he, it's, it's a lot of work over there, so this guy's gonna come in and he's gonna add a new feature. Hopefully, we'll have adult and children's nighttime fall lessons under the lights. So there'll be some added tennis programs, uh, because of the lights, and because, uh, of the additional play and tournaments, so. I think we'll, we'll be okay. And it'll be, the parking lot needs it, because of safety features, and the basketball court certainly will be a nice addition for people. Those lights have been broken, they tell me now, for over twenty years, so. I thought it'd be time to say. I'm gonna jump right on it.
Next is stamping update.
Yeah, un, unfortunately and fortunately, let me tell you this, that, um, it's, it's bittersweet for me to announce that, um, Melissa Miller has accepted a job at the high school. And she's got her master's degree in the, um, in special needs, special ed, and she'll be working five oh four program for the high school.
Oh, wonder.
Starting December sixteenth, or seventeenth.
Congratulations. This is your. Yes. Definitely miss you.
I've been here in the office for nine years, and here at these meetings for four years, full-time, so, um, I'm so grateful that I had the opportunity here, and. I'm looking forward to being at the events and continuing to support the department, so I thank all of you for all the time that you've volunteered around the board, and I'm glad that I got to know you through this. A familiar face.
And, and do not expect a new person coming in to do the minutes like she does, so. Because she's, uh, there's nobody better than her, so I'm very happy and pleased that I've had the opportunity to be with her. Um, saying that, I give you the next thing, that Hadeo Magidou will be leaving March twentieth, and she's going to Turkey for her wedding and moving to London. So, uh, yeah, she's marrying a diplomat for the country of Ireland, and he's a great guy, Jamal, and, uh, just a wonderful man with, I think, two master's degrees, working on his third, so he's, he's quite a, 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 quite an educated diplomat, I guess you'd say. Um, funny story, Hadeo was bringing her back to New Jersey, uh, to JFK, New York, and he had a Parks and Rec sweater on, and a senior citizen couple said, hey, are you from Newington, Connecticut? He goes, well, kind of, yeah. And then they said, do you know Bill DeMaio? Hey, in fact, I do. So he felt really cool that he was, uh, recognized in New York for Newington. That was fun. And, and Hadeo has been nothing but great too, I can't say enough good about her. And then last but not least, today, Nancy Glenn accepted a job at Rocky Hill Parks and Recreation. And she's, she's getting a thirty-three thousand dollar raise, doing less of a job, smaller job, and with one outdoor pool and one indoor pool. And no preschool, so she, it's, it's a no-brainer for her.
Rocky Hill, you said?
Yeah, yeah, so Rocky Hills, Craig Bowman is the director there, I hired him twenty-five years ago in New Britain, he worked for me for fifteen, I helped him get the job as director in, in Rocky Hill. I was on his interview panel, and, uh, he sold Nick Pitzer Frye. Nick's going to real estate full-time, and Nancy's gonna take his job. Yeah, so, um, sittersweet, you know, I, I'm so proud of these young people that I'm, I'm happy for them. I still have a list that, um, I counted this morning, I have thirty-seven professionals working that I trained throughout the country, from Colorado, California, New Hampshire, Massachusetts, and Connecticut, so. Very proud of teaching young people how to become Parks and Rec professionals, and, uh, I've taken a great deal of pride in that for all my years, so, so.
As you should.
Yeah, yeah.
Gonna be big shoes to build.
I know. A lot of, a lot of shoes, a lot of laces.
Do you have any?
Uh, I'm, I'm trying to get, uh, Sam and Luke in our office, Papalardo and Joey Zavisha, to consider applying for the jobs. That's at least three in-house. That's at least three in-house candidates. And then we'll advertise, well, first of all, they have to advertise to the union. They get five days. I don't suspect many union people are gonna come in. And then after that, it goes public, and then we'll see what kind of candidates. I can tell you this, the pool one is a very difficult niche to fill. You know, some people told me that hundreds of people would apply, because everyone wants to come to Newington. We don't pay enough, quite frankly. Our salary scales are woefully, woefully low. Berlin's paying a hundred and twelve for their rec supervisor. I talked to her today. West Hartford's over a hundred grand. Glassbury just paid ninety-three thousand to start for a guy. Rocky Hill's at ninety-six five. And Weathersfield started at ninety-five. So we're, we're at sixty-eight. It sucks. We're not even in the game. We're not even in the game. So very, very difficult. I only took this job because I had a pension in New Britain, or you couldn't, you couldn't live on this kind of money. So it's, it is what it is, and it depends what your motivation is. Me particularly, I love Newington, I've been here sixty-seven years. So, you know, you different, you catch some people that are into it, but you're not gonna get experienced Parks and Recreation professionals to come to Newington anymore. They let it go by, right? It just didn't work. So anyway, it is what it is. You know, we're gonna do the best we can to convince people that it's important to pay people and give them the value that they are. Otherwise, it's, it's hard to fill these jobs. Yeah. And we built this department on a lot of work, right? I mean, if these, these young people work day and night, and that's not a norm for a lot of these places. So and the other thing is, all the other towns are all now in a union, too, and, and now we're in a union. So I'm not, but I mean, everyone else is. So it's, the society has changed, the world has changed. We all know that. We'll keep moving forward, staying positive and, and saying, you know what, we'll start again. We'll try this one more time, see what happens. So.
I just wanna say, me personally, I can't appreciate all the things that you've done over eight years. It's been, you're an amazing person. Every time we need anything, research, or a letter written that somebody might actually read and understand. You were there. Same thing with you. I feel very blessed to have known both of you. You know, I probably got to know you both better than some of the guys, because you don't have the daily contact or regular contact. But you're gonna be missed. I'm gonna miss you. And I really wish you the best.
Bittersweet. Thank you.
It's good news that you're staying in Newington.
Yes, right down the street. I told them I'm right down the street. If they need anything, I'm still here.
And just to give you, you know, just to pile on the greatness of Melissa, she, not only she acted in the church, the church congregation, but she also had Fidelco go and give a speech about guide dogs and blindness. And her family just took on an eight-month-old, eight-week-old. Yeah. So, yeah, she's multifaceted and does it all.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Now, on a little lighter subject, I think anyone that's missed Bill and his videos, I have. We are about to see them.
That's because Phil wanted us.
Hello, everybody. My name is Bill DeMayo. I'm the superintendent of the Newington Parks and Recreation Department. And, oh, it's Christmas time, and it's a favorite time of year for me. I guess I, I sent out a memo, but nobody got it to dress up crazy, so I did anyway, just to make it fun. But we're talking about December fifth, Friday, the Night of Lights, downtown Newington, Main Street. We've got so many activities going on from six to eight thirty PM. And I've got another group of new friends that Pastor Jim actually put us in touch with each other, Jen and Lisa from Just Two Gals. How are you guys?
Great, thank you.
Good, good. And my other friend is Julian from Ruth Chris, right? How are you, Julian?
How are you?
I'm doing well. And we're standing at the Flash Lady Photography's new studio, right here in Newington. And they do family pictures for holidays, but they do it all year round. Certainly call up Kristin Vaca, and she owns the Flash Lady Photography. And just make sure you try to get your name on the list. She's very busy, but she does excellent, excellent work. So that's really cool. So let's see, what are we gonna talk about today? Is, are you guys bringing a mobile cocktail trailer to the event for the first time ever?
We are. We're very excited about it.
Is it decorated like Christmas?
Oh, it will be decorated like Christmas.
Yeah?
Like your outfit.
It will have lights? Okay, all right, good. A lot extra.
And it's going to be a fantastic setup, so we're excited.
Okay, so it's not a secret anymore. We're honoring Don Woods at this holiday festival as part of the Parks and Recreation thing. And the reason why is Don Woods is stepping back from being the chairman and on the Parks and Recreation Board for over thirty-eight years of volunteering. Can you believe that? Don Woods is the greatest guy. He's up at Stonehedge. And he has just done so much for Parks and Recreation on his watch. Lots of good things have happened for our residents in Newington. And for that, we're gonna honor him, and we're gonna have the mobile cocktail trailer. And we're gonna have a special drink that you guys are making. It's gonna be called the Don Woods Holiday Special. And could you describe it for us, so everyone knows what it is?
Sure, sure. So it's vodka-based. And we have, it's going to be crushed ice, it's gonna be layered with cranberry and pineapple, mixed with the vodka. And on the top, it's going to be infused, excuse me, sugar-coated cranberry, excuse me, with dried limes. And of course topped off with a fresh spring almond as well, to give it that festive holiday look.
Holy smokes, that is something special. Special drink for a special guy, Don Woods. And then Julian from Ruth Chris, he's sponsoring the whole trailer thing. You're gonna donate all the vodka, did I hear?
Yeah, I'm actually very happy to get to meet these lovely ladies, and, you know, we're part of this beautiful event. And yeah, we definitely donated, oh boy.
Yeah, Pastor Jim, I think, will be here a little later. He's, he's from Chapel Church, and he got us connected, and then we got them connected with, with Julian. And it's just, all these good people are coming together. I've always said, my parents always told me, surround yourself with good people, and that's what I'm doing. And it's so, it's so fulfilling, because all of them share my love for both Christmas and Hanukkah and Three Kings Day. It's all good. It's, it's gonna be a fun, fun weekend at Newington, on Main Street. So we're gonna have the cocktails. We've got high-top stand-up bars. Everyone can go over and see Don Woods and shake his hand, congratulate him, thank him for all his time that he put together. I know his wife always makes fun of me for having boxed wine at our special events, but this year, we're not doing boxed wine, right? We're, we're gonna do wine with bottles? Oh, I hope Linda Woods is happy with Bill for first time ever. That'll be great. But yeah, we're gonna have so much fun. And then you're also doing, if it's just, if there's not drinkers, we also have hot coffee and hot cider?
Yep.
Will the cider have maybe cinnamon or something in it?
Oh, yes, it will.
Yeah?
Yes. We have hot cider with cinnamon and a bunch of rich flavors. So if you want to get alcohol, you'll enjoy the cider. If you do wanna add something to it, you can spike it up and spice it up for you a little bit more.
If you guys haven't seen their trailer, they've got tiers of all kinds of alcohol, right? You've got bourbon and vodka and gin and all that stuff.
I've seen the show. It's definitely stunning.
Yeah, it's, yeah. Yeah. So this is gonna be a party. We're, we're not fooling around. The kids are gonna have entertainment. You can send your kids off to the Waka Mole, or the race car driving, or the singing, or whatever they do. But the parents can have a spot right on Main Street and just enjoy themselves. It's gonna be right next to the church, too, so you can go into the church and check out the gingerbread cookies and the gingerbread houses that they're making and exhibit. So we got so much activities going on, and I wanna thank just you two gals and Julian from Ruth Chris. What a great thing. And, and of course, the Flash Lady Photography for putting, helping us put all this together. And of course, I have the best Parks and Recreation staff in the world, Roderick, Nancy, and Hadil, and Clay Pedego. And the park guys are working right now. We just rented this man lift thing that gets them up way up high in the trees. And we're putting tens of thousands of lights all over Newington, stars, decorations, all kinds of flags. It's, it's gonna be fun. So everybody, come December fifth, Friday, Main Street, Newington, six to eight thirty. You're not gonna wanna miss the laser light show. You're not gonna wanna miss, oh, I didn't say anything about the, we're bringing in fire jugglers for the first time. Never had fire performers before. So, yeah. Thank the police department, fire departments, all, highway department, Parks Division, everybody that gets involved. We're thankful for this community event. We had over twelve thousand people last year. I hope to get over fifteen thousand. By the way, Renee Danino will be there from Channel Three, and Channel Three is going to be our TV sponsor for this event. So it is gonna be a wild time. You're not gonna wanna miss this December fifth, Main Street, Night of Lights, sponsored by Parks and Recreation. Appreciate you listening. Hello, everybody. My name is Bill DeMayo with the Newington Parks and Recreation Department. And we're here at the Flash Lady's new studio. It's fabulous. Holy smokes. She's sponsoring the Night of Lights Samours. We're gonna have a giant bonfire in the middle of Main Street. How many people see bonfires on Main Street? And we're gonna be cooking a thousand marshmallows. The kids will be able to have sticks and everything else, and the graham crackers and the chocolate, and it's just gonna be a ton of fun. But today, I've got my really good friend, Mr. Melanie Enfield, from Congregational Church in the center of town. How you doing, Melanie?
Ah, good.
Good, good.
Excited for this event.
Yeah, it's December fifth, six to eight thirty PM, Main Street, on Friday, December fifth. You gotta make sure you put it on your calendar. Tell all your friends and neighbors, we're gonna have activities for little kids, all the way up to senior citizens and everything in between. We've got Martin Kellogg coming, and John Wallace, and the high school choral groups, and the music teachers, and, oof, a lot of fun. But what, what's the church gonna do this year? Because it's, it's been a ton of fun every year.
Well, we have the hot chocolate, which is a big hit always, like a thousand cups.
Steve Woods tells me that you serve the thousand free cups, free is the word, hot chocolate to warm up during the cold weather.
And our bathrooms are open.
Okay.
For all those people, there's someplace to go.
That's right. That's right. And they've got the nice church there.
And the sanctuary will be open, decorated, they'll have music going, the leaders can play music. We have the prayer tree. People can add a prayer.
Prayer tree? Okay, nice. So they could bring some intentions and things like that?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Peace for the world, whatever it is that they want.
We could use that. We could use that.
We'll have our live activity outside.
Oh, that's always.
Mary and Joseph and baby.
No, and, and live animals.
And live animals.
Yeah. Yeah, that's really good. That's, that's really, it's so festive and so warming for everybody to see and watch.
Yeah, we're happy to open our doors and let people in. And this year, we're doing something new.
Yeah.
We're having a gingerbread exhibit. So people can create their own gingerbread house or barn, whatever it is, and they bring it to the church by the Thursday before. And then we're gonna have an exhibit for all of them to see.
Oh, isn't that nice?
Yeah.
Well, we've got Roderick and Joey Zavisha are, are doing, the exercise Right Choice kids are gonna get involved, and they're buying kits for gingerbread houses. They're gonna make them on December second, then bring them over to your church into the room so people can see them.
Perfect, perfect. Everybody can come in and see them. It'll be a really nice exhibit if it's cold. Come in and warm up.
Yep. And maybe the kids can have their parents come and their siblings to see the gingerbread houses that they made.
Names on them, they title up, whatever they want.
That's gonna be fabulous. Looking forward to that so much. Thank you so much for your involvement, your generosity, and your whole church, all your membership.
Yeah.
They're just.
We're happy to participate.
It's a great time of year, isn't it?
It is fun.
Christmas is the best. It's, it makes everybody happy, and hopefully, everyone will be kind to each other and, and really make Newington something special. And that's gonna start on December fifth. All our park guys are out right now today decorating the whole downtown, and they've got all-stars, and they've got lights. Tens of thousands of lights are gonna go on that tree and all around Newington. Excellent. Thanks so much, Melanie, for stopping by at Flash Lady's thing. Okay, peace. Love you. Take care. All right, bye-bye. Hello, everybody.
This is preschool.
Six four.
Times and places are all in who you share them with. And it's life, and the point is enjoying who you share it with. Joy is who you share it with. And the weeks and the weekends are deep and close, who you spend away. And in time, what you find is the timing, who you spend it with. Joy is who you share it with. Who you share it with. Who you share it with. Yeah, now, it's a moment.
That's it.
Well, if you wanna watch me again, we could. I know you're black.
He doesn't have any time.
So thousands and thousands of people are seeing those things, like, I think, four thousand each of those. And the other ones, as the staff meeting today, we went over that, over twenty-two thousand people have seen the, the June events and the Life Being in events on the video. So the social media really works, really gets you going.
I hate to break it to you, Bill, that was three thousand nine hundred and ninety. I muted that many times. Well, thanks for helping out. The formal suit was just. Hoping I, I gotta lose a couple pounds, but I wanna borrow that. Your rings.
Amazon.
Amazon? You think there's another one out there somewhere?
No, I think that means I'll wear one.
You could borrow it for the night.
Or the sweater.
Yeah. I would really hate to take the image.
Yeah. I mean, Bill could layer the sweater and the jacket.
Yes.
So there was, there's a guy in Facilities, John Gamachi, I think his name is. He was in the conference room. I came out, I tried it on in my office. I came out, he walked out of this door, and he goes, holy shit.
Just a typical day.
It was pretty funny.
All good. All right, so comments by the board, anybody? No? I just wanna say myself, this is my last meeting. I have really, truly enjoyed my time on this board and commission. I've met a lot of great people. We've done a lot done over the years that I've been on. The Parks and Rec Department, thirty-eight years ago to what it is today, actually, there isn't even a remote comparison, you know? The staff, Melissa, Hadil, I don't know Nancy as well, but every time, their jobs were done amazingly well. And almost, I, I don't know, maybe you had a bad day, but I've never seen one, you know? So, yeah, it's gonna be different. I'm not sure that, I, I think I'll miss it, but we'll have to see. But again, I just wanna say, Billy, especially you, your friendship, amazing. We've been through a lot together, a lot of ice thrown around. I didn't know you that well, but how many years have you been on? Fourteen years, twelve years?
I think it's either sixteen or eighteen.
Sixteen. And it's, it's been a great relationship, you know? Ed couldn't be here tonight. His wife fell and broke both her ribs.
Oh, jeez.
She's home. But Ed, Ed, too, is always there at every single event. But I'm not gonna babble on, but all I can say is, thanks a lot. It's been fun, and good luck to you in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
And Billy and Ed, yeah, Billy and Ed are also leading the board, too. So that's, that's gonna be a big hit for us. We're gonna miss you guys, but thank, very thankful for everything you've done.
Thank you all, and congratulations to the girls on their new jobs and new ventures.
Thank you.
Nancy and Melissa, that's great.
Thank you.
So, Bill?
Yeah.
You wanna make the motion to adjourn for our last meeting?
Certainly.
Oh, anyone in public?
Yeah, we have a couple of people. Let me see if there's any hands.
Okay.
We have a hand raised. All right, they should be able to talk. Just see.
Oh, Sebastian, that needs a compulsion.
Okay, yep. I just see iPhone, your hands raised. You should be able to talk.
Hi, I, I think that's me, Dana Havens, one thirteen Stoddard Avenue. Don, I'm really gonna miss you being on this board, and I hope that when there's more poll meetings, that you and I can sit together on opposite sides, but together. And joke around and have a good time. I'm really gonna miss you.
All right, thank you. Now, we have Nancy.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry I joined the meeting late. I was working a little overtime tonight. I could not get out. I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm gonna try to make the meetings in person, moving forward. I'm going to try to make the meetings in person, uh, moving forward. I just wanted to say hello and, um, looking forward to, to, uh, you know, being part, the liaison for, uh, um, this board.
Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you, thanks for the call, good luck.
Thank you.
Hello.
And AJ had surgery, I believe, so he's, I don't know if he's on Zoom or not, but.
That's it.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay, Bill, your turn.
I'd like to make a motion, we adjourn.
I'm second.
Second that.
Have a happy Thanksgiving to everybody too.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, see ya.
Okay, I guess you have the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, Tim was on too. Hey, Tim. Hey, hey, I've been here.
What is your name?
All right.
That's a wrap.